The audience has shrunk.
Ryan hasn't said anything.
Tape is rolling.
All right, all getting back in the room. We're on item number 12, proposal to change the meeting location from here to Rapid Valley Sanitary District building out in the valley. Dan?
Well, I guess the background on this, folks will recall that at our last meeting, I had raised the question, you know, regarding switching perhaps to a 3:00 p.m. meeting to basically be a little bit more available to the different agencies that we tend to work with, you know, certainly when I look around the audience, most of the time I see people that are here basically as part of their job with whatever agency it is that we tend to work with and, you know, a lot of people, general public, they may prefer the late day meeting, but we don't seem to deal with very many of them. So having had that discussion, you know, I thought, well, I'll go ahead and, you know, our next agenda item will be, you know, whether or not to switch to the 3:00 p.m. slot, but, you know, it occurred to me that this room, we have no guarantees that it will be available to us any given month, you know, most of the time in the evening it is, but the afternoon time slots, there are various activities that go on here and if something comes along in an afternoon time slot, we would, we would get bumped. And I'd always intended to check back with West River Electric. West Dakota used to meet at West River Electric up until several years ago, there was a, what kind of a situation it was. They, the short story on it, they got kicked out of there. We won't go into the details of why. One of the, basically, West Dakota had been invited there in the first place, previous director had been Dwight Peterson, who had worked career at West River, and he, you know, they said, sure, West Dakota could use their community room. So I checked with Dwight, you know, any chance we'd be able to get back in there? And he, he's since retired from, from West River, but he had the connections. And turns out, the answer was no, but not because of being kicked out, but they're not letting anybody use the community room till whenever it might be. But he, he says, well, you know, I'm on the board for the Rapid Valley Water Sanitation District, and they've got a new building, a new conference room, and maybe that would work. And so he, he called them up, and they said, sure, it'd be fine, and they invited us to come up and look at it. And I guess Dan's got pictures of it up there, but, you know, it would be available to us, you know, it would be very, I think it would be, I don't think we would ever have a conflict, you know, we'd be able to schedule the room, you know, for the entirety of the year, each year. So with that as the, the background, I'll just make the, the motion that we, we move to that location.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Second by Ron, discussion through the board. Any board member? Tom?
Got a couple of questions, Dan. What's the cost for the room? Or are they giving it?
Same as here.
So it's free?
And I, I forgot to mention, I've become quite fond of our, it's actually showing up pretty good today, but the wrinkled screen there, and I love the way the fans come on and the furnaces roar and then...
I'm hoping it's warmer.
And the chairs were lots off.
Did other directors get a chance to, to go out there and have a, have a look at it?
I did.
I did. Is there more chairs for guests? Plenty of room for the directors to sit, but...
Yeah, there's a stack of them in the corner.
Yeah, there's chairs in the back.
There's about 20, I think. Was there a bouquet? Oh, it's laid out nicely and everything, too.
Yeah, it is.
The ceiling's lower, you can probably hear better.
Yeah, their board is, has nine members, just like ours, and so it's really set up for, perfect for us. Tom?
And there was a bathroom off to that one corner, too.
Would we have to be worried about, since you mentioned the West River Electric building, that does, that pass scares me, is there any possibility that we would get kicked out, booted, or moved if their board changes to allow us to use the room? I, I, I don't need to ask like redundant questions, but being on the board as long as I have, this would be probably the fourth, no, fifth, if we approve this fifth meeting spot in three and a half years. So I'm just a little bit hesitant to change the spot. I do agree that the furnaces, the fans, the wavy thing, and how far it, like, I get the point why we are looking at moving, I just want to make sure that not in December of this year, we're going, okay, now we're gonna go to Mines, or because this didn't work out. And so that's what I, that's my concern.
They, they do have, we actually had a good discussion with their manager that kind of delved into water stuff, but their, their meetings are regularly scheduled, so there's not a, not a conflict, as it turns out. And, you know, this has served us well because of the COVID, and of course, when we moved from the chemistry building at Mines to here, it was when, you know, Steve Rollinger was still the director, and, you know, he landed in the wheel, too. I mean, it, this has served us as well, but, you know, anyhow, I, I, you can't never say never, is one of the things I say, but it, it, my sense is that their conference room has almost no usage, and, you know, it's basically so they can have, they've got a board, they have a board meeting whenever it is, and anyhow, they've got us scheduled now for May and then also for July, and we told them we'd cancel if that didn't happen, but they, they just, see, near as I can tell, always available.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we would, we would start there in May?
Correct.
Any, any questions, Dan?
I'll just mention, I've, I did check out the, there's a big screen, doesn't look real big on this picture here, but, and it does seem to work fine with the computer.
Okay. Any other questions, guys? All right.
I'll just add, it's kind of for the next item, but I did check with Kim here at Pennington County, and if we did go to a 3:00 meeting time, she said this room wouldn't be available.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Pull the same sign. Motion carries, so we will have our May, May meeting there. And then the other item, follow-up item, is time.
So we've pretty much had our discussion, or a discussion, you know, the straw poll two months ago, so I have nothing further to add to that, and I'll just make the motion that we switch from 6:00 to 3:00, and I'll apologize to Tom if it passes, I realize evenings are better for you, but you said it wasn't unworkable, and so I'll make the motion.
All right, the motion's to change the time from 6:00 to 3:00 p.m. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Randy. Discussion. Tom?
So I'll reiterate, and I was talking to my spouse about this, and it wasn't even about budgets or work schedules or anything, but our, my big thing is access to public meetings, and I believe at 6:00 will give more public access. So if we want to be out there more to discuss things, have more public input than the five people that normally show up, and I know Joey always shows up, and I know in the previous straw poll, when we talked to the stakeholders, the people that look for our funding, they'll show up if we have it at 10:00 a.m. or 10:00 p.m. If, if they want to attend the meeting, they'll attend the meeting. So I believe that at 6:00, certain time is more public friendly. I do see the new makeup of the board, and that this is almost 8:00, and we're down to one more thing, other than general comments, that we're an efficient board, and that the time change isn't necessary. But as Dan said, if it does move to 3:00, I will attend, and I am not gonna be mad if it changes, so I will, I'll show up whenever it meets. So if it's like 10:00 a.m. or 10:00 p.m., I'll be here, so...
Okay. Any other comments?
Does, does the sanitation district would accommodate 6:00 to 9:00 or whatever?
Yeah, night to meet?
The new place we're gonna meet.
6:00 to 9:00 in the evening?
Yeah.
Yes, they would. Matter of fact, I think they said they'd give us the key.
Well, the, part of the deal is, is they are open, you know, from 3:00 on. If we, if we would go at 6:00, they're, they're not open, so it is more convenient for them at 3:00, but, but if we wanted to meet at 6:00, you know, they, they can accommodate.
We have to go get a key.
Yeah.
Before we get in at 6:00.
That's, that's what they said, we'd have to get a key.
And then when we're done, leave it on the table, pick it up next time.
Yeah, exactly, so...
Can we, oh, I'm sorry, Dan. My bad.
So if we had it at 6:00...
Somebody'd have to go out and get a key, so we could get into the building.
Yeah.
On the east door.
Would somebody that came at, say, 8:00 and wanted to public, would they be able to get in, or would we have to? At West River Electric...
If somebody come in at 8:00, we'd have to let them in on the east door.
Okay.
Where the parking lot is, or part of it.
At West River Electric, we have a secret code that we would...
This takes, yeah, I didn't know the code yet yesterday when I come to the doors. That's why I waited, somebody happened to come out, and I went in. Yeah, I told them I was there to see you.
I did try to catch you, by the way, you were walking around the corner.
Oh, did you? Well, we went to Armadillo's and had some ice cream.
Very important.
So I didn't waste my time.
Did you have a comment, Ryan?
Well, I, you know, I respect what you're trying to say, Mac, and what I'm wondering about is not, not to switch it off and on and off and on, but if, if we have somebody who wants to present and can't make it, I mean, I, I think it's worth a shot to try at 3:00, but if we find out it's not working for the general public who we do serve, technically, we may have to consider changing it back.
Well, I've been on the board for three, three years, and we, you know, we really, I don't think the time was really, was initially, because we're dealing with, you know, agencies, people who work for the government.
If they're looking for money, they'll come at 3:00.
Yeah, if they want money, they'll be here, so I, I don't think it's gonna affect very many people that I, that I can remember.
Okay.
I guess, you know, one of my main, two of my main drivers are, you know, I met with West Dakota for, you know, basically from 1990, not, 1990 for the next, you know, couple of decades and a half, and, and there were, there was much more attendance from other agencies who were in the water business, who would just kind of drop in to keep tabs on what's going on with West Dakota and the, the water world. And since I've been on the board, I've heard from many of these people, you know, that, well, when are you gonna go back to afternoon meetings where people can, you know, the, the water agencies can, it'll fall within their work hours? But that's what's driven me, I mean, I care less if I have to be here at 6:00, it takes part of my evening, no big deal, but I really think it's more of a benefit to the, you know, the agencies with whom we work.
We've had some representatives from DNR that have driven out from peer for a night meeting, and, you know, if it was in the afternoon, I think it would be way more convenient for them, especially if they plan on driving back.
Sure, I like 3:00.
So, well, let's, we'll vote on this motion, Dan. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign?
Aye.
One no from Tom. Motion carries.
Can I make one follow-up comment?
Sure.
It's nice to have discussions that are friendly like this, and it would be nice that, even if we disagree, that we can do so in a pleasant fashion.
My follow-up comment to your follow-up comment is, we're all here to help the community and help, help out water usage and water quality projects, so that's the main thing, and I will make sure that I can make future meetings.
Well said. So item 14 is to consider and approve a new annual contract with our administrator for April...
I just had a, so I should advertise our next meeting at 3:00 p.m., right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, and we probably should.
Do they have a particular area they want us to park in, since they're still open for business?
I think that it's...
They've got a pretty good sized parking lot there.
Yeah.
I think they've just got several staff people that are typically there.
There's three, I think, in there.
We could ask if they want.
There's only two here.
We could, we could find that out, though, and let Dan know, and he could send it out, let us know.
And they realize we have some setup time needed to, I assume.
It's gonna take, yeah, we'll probably need to be there at least half an hour ahead of time.
I'm sure it won't be an issue for them.
No, they were, they were very, very happy to accommodate us, so...
But one fair enough point, you know, as far as advertising, we probably do want to, to whatever extent, kind of get the word around, you know, maybe that's mostly word of mouth from those of us on the board.
Sure.
You've got kind of your regular mechanism, but I guess you always send out an email, and it's easy enough to point it out specifically, new time and date.
It's on the web, it'll be on the website.
Yeah.
Which nobody will look at, I mean, but they'll see the email that you send out, I mean, those that, that follow it.
Well, I'm sure everybody will read the minutes in the legal advertising.
Moving right along here. Item 14, Tom, Mac, you're gonna report on, on your contract you came up with?
Yep. So, Small Committee and myself worked with Dan Malali to come up with a new contract for the admin year of April 2021 to April 2022. Before you, you have the contract proposal, that our admin has, the previous year took a salary of $50,820, which was the previous salary for 2019. The only difference in last year's contract and the 2019 contract is we granted him to have the option to take state holidays off. Now, with the new contract that is proposed, he is requesting a 3% increase to $52,345 for the administration activities and fees. Pretty much, it has stayed roughly the same. The biggest thing that will happen during this contractual year is that there may be some reorganization of the district due to the census that happened in 2020. In addition, under administration, which is on the second page of the contract, for bullet point down, as the committee heads conference with each other through email, we found out that we really don't know how Dan spends his time, and so we asked him to officially log his hours and associate him to what type of activity he does with those hours, just so that we have a better understanding, just in case it does come up for the, probably the 2020, April 2022 to the future, if we decide to look at other options. Today, I am proposing to approve the contract of hiring the admin, Dan Malali, from Malali Consulting for $52,345.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Scott?
Uh huh.
Okay. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Dan. Another year. All right. I just scored the round a little here. I don't have any comments. I did, Ken, we talked about those meetings that I attended, and I was gonna bring that up, but we've already touched on that. Is any items from directors?
I'd like to thank my admin contract committee for all their help and their input. It was greatly appreciated, and so I'd just like to thank everyone that was a part of our committee.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Well, I was gonna thank, officially thank Gary Drews from the county commission to come to our meeting tonight, and glad to have him. Welcome to come anytime.
Thank you.
You were that board tonight, Gary?
For me.
You were that board, are you looking for something to do?
Nothing better to do.
I'm not that bored.
Dan?
I've iterated over the course of the past several days with Jason Phillips from the School of Mines, who has worked on our little program for identifying potential sites for future stormwater mitigation, basically stormwater inventory, as we'd call it. He'd had a draft report, I'd reviewed, made a few comments, they've since, he got that incorporated today, so, Dan, you should, Dan M., you should receive an email, I suspect from Brett Lingwall, I'd suggested that he should actually transmit the, the final report to us. The, you know, I was actually pretty impressed with the way the ranking mechanism worked out, the way it was written up. You know, probably this report or this little project panned out a little better than I might have envisioned, you know, recognizing that it was, you know, very much of a, of a pilot effort, kind of an unknown. My sense is that, you know, we've had these, there are these 24 named drainage basins, stormwater basins, you know, three of them have essentially been completed. There were two more that we kind of had on the list, and at least parts of several more that would be worth doing. The large majority of them, really, I don't think there would be benefit in, in doing similar inventory, but I think really the way to approach this is, you know, I'll, I'll work with Jason and Dr. Lingwall and, you know, see about a proposal for a, a follow-up project to wrap it up, you know. Jason's in a PhD program there and probably will be for, you know, another year or two, and, you know, I think it'd be useful to, I, I think the cost will be pretty minimal, so I'll come up with a proposal on that. And, you know, one more aspect is, we had approached the, the administrator for the Rapid Map project or program, if anyone's familiar with that, it's basically a joint effort between the, the city and the county that primarily identifies ownership for land parcels throughout the county and then various other layers. They would at least consider, you know, that as a platform on which we could put, you know, Jason's property. If, if they would host it there, that would be a nice way to make it available to the public. So I'll, I'll follow up with them and see whether that will be a possibility.
Sounds good.
I have a question. You mentioned Rapid Map, is that just for Rapid City?
It's Pennington County. It's all of Pennington County.
I'm just wondering if it would make sense to try to get our redistricting boundaries entered into that.
Well, I, I think it's been part of a year ago that they, at the request of Richie Nordstrom, I think they have, I think there is a layer there, I think you can bring up the West Dakota boundaries, I don't think it used to be there, but I think our area boundaries are, are now there, so if that is in fact true, if they do change, I would think that they would want to change it, if that's what you're asking, is that?
Really much, I didn't know they were even in there now. I know the maps that you have in your packet were developed by H2E, so if these boundaries change, I'm not quite sure if we wanted to make new maps, how that would be done.
Well, I'll, I'll make a note to check on it. I actually have used it quite a bit of late, and I could certainly snoop around and see if that layer is there, I suspect it is.
Do you have any idea when we're gonna get the data that will dictate whether we need to make changes?
I, I don't know when. I think it will be this year, but DNR is in charge of that, and I've been told by Jake Gilbertson, who's been through this before from East Dakota, that they make great pains to try not to disrupt things and, you know, move two directors into the same area and stuff like that. That's about all I know, though.
Any other items from the directors? If not, Dan, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, thank you for redoing my contract, and I, I can understand, you know, how, what I do is kind of mysterious, but, so, so I wanna make, you know, I basically work for you guys, so if you have something you want me to look into or something you want me to help with, you know, feel free to do that. If you dial the office, it almost always rings through to my cell, I check emails there, and so I, you know, want to help out as best I can. What I, what I don't really do unless I'm directed to is go out looking for projects, because that's, when I took this job, I was told, don't do that, that's not your job. You want to change that, that's up to you guys, but it's a little bit, well, I won't go into the history, but, so I, I guess I'll leave it at that. And I'll get to my list here, I have a few items. I sent the financial, every year we have to do a financial report, so that's been sent to the state. Occasionally, I talk to one of my, somebody at, near the Air Force on the Teflon problem, Nancy Maynard actually is her name, and it sounds like they're, they put filters on their well systems, and they get clogged up a lot, and they're problematic, and the only real, probably, permanent solution is to hook up to Fox Elder Water, however, she says it's not very good quality water, so not sure what's gonna happen there. I'll just keep going unless somebody has questions. South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems, of which we're a member, I think it's like $500 or something, has redesignated us from Class B to Class C, so in a sense, we got demoted, however, the reason probably makes sense, there, there's a representative from the Class C group on the board, and so they're asking for suggestions of somebody either from the board, this is, this goes out to all the water development districts, not just us. So somebody on the board or admin to fill that vacancy, and that, that would be temporary, I guess, until they, for whatever reason, they don't have somebody on there now, but when they have an official process where they do that. Anyway, Jake Gilbertson, basically from East Dakota Water Development District threw his hat in the ring, and I think he would be an excellent person to have on there. He's kind of the granddaddy, the unofficial spokesman for all the water development districts, but I, I'll throw it out if somebody else wants to have their name in there. I can send it, you know, send, have, give you the contact information for that, so let me know. The state repairing buffer program, I guess there's not too much on that, however, that's legislative items, I might comment again. The Trinity Eagle Park, of course, it's across the street from me, so I look at that, and it's, looks like it's, most of the work is done. There's a channel that flows into the pond that is at the wrong level, so water's pooling up, so that needs to be fixed. Basically, Kent Stein, Steinke told me that the weather stopped work on it, and I, I got a couple photos here that show what they did, so this one, I think they call that the Forbait. That's one of the big additions to it, so there's a Hardee's over here on Fifth Street, and this alley is where the water ran into it, but it was kind of an uncontrolled flow, and so they put this thing in to collect sediment, and they'll have eventually what they call a weir in there, so they can monitor flow, and maybe some instrumentation from School of Mines, who are still involved with this. Jason Phillips is the project manager. So there's another, this water is not supposed to be there, that's supposed to flow here, so I'm guessing you'd have to lower this, so that's one of the other, some of the other work yet to be done there. And there's just another shot with the, where the inflow is there. And there's just another shot with the, um, where the inflow is there. Anyway, it's looking, I, I think it's looking pretty good. So the Living Lab, there's not too much to update, they, that's the one at the School of Mines, and they have, um, one upperclassman and two freshmen, because they want to get people in early on, so they stay with the project a while, and they, they did a lot of surveys, but there hasn't really been any physical work done, other than staking out some of the things, um, you heard it from Banner today, um, and, like I said, I was on a call today with Frank DeGeschi, I think is his name, from Brown's office, and Qusay Alhaj from Boone's office, and, um, it looks to me like there's a good possibility that there may be some federal money available next year for, um, whoever's continuing this project, if, if it is continued. I, I talked to Scott Guthrie, he's also the Pennington County Weed Control guy, but he's the, I don't know what his title is, but he's with Black Hills Resource Conservation and Development, and he'd like to maybe present in May as to what they're working on, they haven't really been doing much lately, um, Valley Heights maybe have something I understand.
Yep.
Rabbit Creek Watershed Action, um, trying to think of her name, Lilius?
Yeah.
She kind of is out of it now, or doesn't, isn't actively involved, so it's Justin Harriman now, and he wants to speak in May. I had in my notes, and I can't quite remember what the question was, but somebody was asking about the role of the executive board, and it's not mentioned in the bylaws, but it's mentioned in the policies, and basically it just says the executive board can do a few different things, like approve travel vouchers and things like that, um, and I guess I jumped, okay, that's later, but that covers that point. And then Director Driscoll thought it would be good if I discussed the open meeting laws, and probably a lot of you are already familiar with them, but we were, he was asking about if it was okay to send out emails and have more people, to board members, and have more than a quorum, so I'll just run through these bullets here, we, we are subject to the South Dakota Open Meetings laws, which, of course, like any legislation, any codified law, it's not always easy to interpret, so if you go to the sd.gov site, there's a document conducting the public's business in public, document that has a bunch of Q and A things and addresses a lot of the issues that people might have, or questions people might have, but basically it boils down to, we want to get the agenda, the agenda should be pretty final twenty-four hours before the meeting, however, since we posted on the website and there's a delay there, I really need to have the agenda finalized by Thursday, so keep that in mind, now technically you can change the agenda, but it's, it's discouraged at the meeting, now we did it at this meeting, but it was, that was kind of a minor point, and it was a non-funded item, so there was probably no controversy there. It's, getting to the email, Director Driscoll's, Driscoll's real question, the, I think the key word is discussions, so email discussions that have more than five members could be considered a violation, so.
More than four members?
Real. Yeah, more than four.
More than up to four, we're okay. By five, we reach the quorum.
Correct. It's, but if, if it's just an email that's just passing information, if it's just going one direction, that's not really a discussion, you know, if you just, if somebody, hey, I found this article on what East Dakota Water Development District did, is doing, and mailed it to all the members, that's highly unlikely to be considered a violation, but if somebody came back and it starts going back and forth, and you said, yeah, we should do something like that, uh, maybe we should have an agenda item, you don't want to do stuff like that. One exception is administrative things like scheduling, um, aren't considered a violation if you're just trying to figure out, you know, what time works for, for this event or something like that. Um, another thing is if you have things you're passing out to, to directors, let's say you emailed all the directors something before a meeting that's pertinent to that meeting, or bring it in, have extra copies so we can put that, those up there for the, for the public. And there is, the state of South Dakota has what they call an open meetings commission, so if somebody complained, it would go to them and they would do whatever they do, I don't know how they handle things like that, but, um, just some legislative issues, you've probably heard, the governor wants D E and R and Department of Bay merged, I don't really know what that's going to do, but, um, it doesn't seem like it's real popular with East Dakota Water Development District. And I guess there's a Senate bill, or the Senate passed a House bill, um, I'm just looking at again here, giving three million to, um, deal with the Big Sioux watershed pollution and things. Um, the, the reason I mentioned, Jake Gilbertson sent me that, the reason I mentioned it is because then the state can claim that money as matching funds to get federal money for other stuff that may affect us, and one example might be that Riparian Improvement Program they're talking about, so, could be some money there, I, I don't know if we would access that directly, how that would work, anyway, um, and then, uh, Director Bjorki and Dr. Chapman and me were at the Black Hills County Commissioners Meeting, and Dr. Chapman gave a presentation on the Missouri River Water Project, and it went over well there, so that's kind of a long-winded.
What's Red Lake near Chamberlain?
Oh, I forgot to mention that, um, Red Lake, like a lot of lakes, is, keeps getting bigger, and it's flowing north, and I think it's called American Creek or something, that there's a dam there, and, um, it's just causing prob, a lot of problems and, you know, maybe stressing the dam, but there was a, I, I got that under, that was a legislative item, and I, I'm not sure about where that went, but they, they wanted to give them, they were asking for a bunch of money to fix that, and I know, actually, it was a lot of money, and it was, wasn't even to fix it, it was for a study, uh, I'm not sure where, I could look into that, though, and see where that ended up. It didn't seem like really something appropriate for the state to fund, but, so maybe it never got any further.
That it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any items from the public, the two public?
To add noise with this, I'll put the logical survey, I just wanted to point out, uh, your discussion on the Rapid Map, I did find it, um.
Oh.
Your zoning districts are on there.
Oh, okay.
They're on the static map, not the GIS layer map, so.
Okay, thank you, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, so you would go, um, Pennington County voting information, so, it's pretty easy to get.
Hey, thanks for doing that. Is your motion adjourned?
Some of.
Scott, second? Tom, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, hold the same sign. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks for, thanks for coming, everybody.
Yep, thank you.